Good evening Wakefield and welcome to the Wakefield Town Council meeting of Monday, June 12, 2023. Call this meeting to order at 7:02 PM. Asking that everyone rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Item number three, attendance. I'm joined today in studio by Councilors Dobrowski, Butt, Smith, Galvin, and Vincent. Counselor McLean is on Zoom. Mike, can you hear us? Great.
Hi Ken, can you hear me?
We can, thank you. And Counselor Daneky is not in attendance today. All right. Item number four is public participation. Mr. Mayo, we have, I think, six people speaking for public participation.
I have four people here and I think Sherry may have a couple online. I don't know who you want to take first.
So let's start in the room. I think we may have slightly more than the number that we have for our 15-minute comment period, so if there's no objection from the council, we'll go a little bit longer on the public comment period. All right. So hearing none of objections. So the rules we follow for public engagement is that each individual will have three minutes to speak. We'll ask you, for those in the room, to come up to the microphone, sit there, and make sure you state your name and address for the record. And the council may choose not to engage at this time, but certainly we'll take into account your comments for discussion later in the meeting or at a future meeting. So, Mr. Mayo, who do we have first?
First, we have Karen McMaster.
Welcome Karen.
Hi. I live at 25 Nahon Street and I did write to speak about both 40B proposed Nahon Street developments, even though one was taken off. Right up front, they're both too big and they don't fit the footprint of the neighborhood. There's nothing on Nahon Street four to six stories tall and having as many units anywhere on the mile-long road or adjacent streets. At the June 1, 32 Nahon Street site visit that we attended, Mass Housing and the architects used completed projects such as Tonos and the 642 Main Street, which is next to Dunkin' Donuts, as comparison. These units should not be compared and used as leverage because they are not zoned for mixed use. And they're not in neighborhoods. They're both on main streets and fringe upon the edges of neighborhoods. With talking to the community, because I've walked around and talked to many people, we have infrastructure concerns, how these large-scale projects wouldn't impact our homes. With drainage, sewage, water pressure, the road is very narrow, destroying green space, the conservation land behind 32 Nahon Street, the green space that would be threatened at Stock Ave and the entire area. Heavy trucking is currently not allowed on Nahon Street, obviously due to the narrow and dense street. How would this play out? Parking, where will the contractors park? As you, the people that attended the 32 site visit, I watched all of you, there was probably 10 of you trying to find somewhere to park, pulling in my driveway, backing up, parking half on the sidewalk. As you know, we have many pedestrians, the track team, they're all using it. So these trucks could not be parked on there. And neighboring streets such as Franklin, Summerbury, Hart, we, they have the same concern. So we know something's going to be developed there and we would like the developers to start thinking of a designated area where they're going to be parking their contractors' trucks, or, you know, maybe they could take the train. With all that said, we're promised there'd be no problems from engineers and architecture, but we don't know. So if we ended up having problems, who protects us? Again, four to six stories is too big. Current residents on Wilson, Nahon, will literally have a concrete wall in their backyard, which would block out the sun and change the entire structure of their ecosystem and their property. Honestly, it's not fair. Dumpsters would fringe upon their property lines and I don't think I have to get into the concerns with dumpsters, you can kind of guess where I'm going with that. The architects at Mass and Mass Housing play up the commuter rail, stating public transportation is easily accessible, including all schools are in walking distance, which is very true. But in the next breath, they inform us that 32 Nahon Street will have 48 parking spaces. So I get confused why they're going to tear down beautiful trees, green space, if their target population is going to use the commuter rail. A lot of people in the neighborhood have literally asked me, why can't we just say no? We have clearly done our fair share. Despite not reaching our 10%, we are close and we have other projects in the works. Many residents left the city and came to a town like Wakefield because we had zoning laws, bylaws to protect us from overdevelopment and we wanted to have a suburban lifestyle. So with no disrespect, we have a body and town government and we don't understand why the state of Massachusetts can just come in and turn over our laws and threaten to cut off our funding if we're noncompliant. Has the city or town ever been cut off? Because I really don't understand how they could do that when we all pay interstate tax. The entirety of Chapter 40B is a huge concern because developers are using it to basically get their way. We are all concerned also that when we do reach our 10%, who says that the state doesn't change the formula and make us up it again? And then where does it lead us?
Just to wrap up.
I'm almost done. In a nutshell, both of these projects, if they're built, are going to cause a ripple effect and it could be endless. So it's not just about Nahon Street, Stock Ave, Hart Street, or any of the other streets. It threatens its entire community. Developers will use these two projects as an example to infiltrate more and more neighborhoods in Wakefield. As a neighborhood and a community, we feel that our town government needs to say no and goes to any length to minimize these developments. We understand there's a need for housing. We're not opposing newer projects. I know something will be built and so don't the other people. The townhouses next to Nix Peach were beautifully done and we would be on board, or I would personally and many others, with the townhouse development. In closing, we would like a friendly compromise and build something that fits the fabric of the neighborhood and also works with the current aesthetic of the community. We want a healthy compromise from both developers. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. McMaster. Steve, who do we have next?
Bob Ballard, 27 Nahon.
Evening, Mr. Ballard.
Hi, how are you? And thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak. I live on 27 Nahon Street, lived there for 30 years. My wife Brenda and I have raised our family with three children and have had, Wakefield's a great town. You guys have been doing just a great job, a family environment, and that's what our main concern and passion is, the safety of every kid that I see walking up and down from the middle school at Galvin to the high school. This is, the street is just unbearable now. I mean, come and sit on my front porch on a Sunday morning and still see traffic all the way up, especially when there is events at the school, whether it's at the Galvin, and with all the sports events there, or something happened at Wakefield, the graduation this past weekend, and watch the traffic back up all the way to Franklin, and continue to watch heavy machine trucks because of the pit and all the other concerns of traffic on that street. Adding this many people with this many parking spaces added on to what we already have. My son has special needs. He takes the bus every morning and I, me and my wife sit on our front porch, like, oh my God, there are people going around the school bus, not adhering to stopping for traffic. It's just, something bad will happen and it's going to take some extra event for somebody to really stop for a minute and say, there's way too much traffic on Nahon Street. There is already an issue. Adding these developments are just going to add to that. So respectfully, we ask you, I ask you, my family asks you, the safety of the residents in Nahon Street and their children come first. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ballard.
Susan Vayer.
Suzy Vayer at 15 A Boran Ave. I'm here tonight to voice concerns about the plan development at the 119 to 135 Nahon Street. I don't live in that neighborhood, but I have friends that do and I occasionally drive down that stretch of road. A few days ago, a friend reached out to me to ask if I knew anything about the project and what she was shared, what she shared with me was concerning. I had heard that there was something being proposed at that site, but admitted that I didn't know the details. The next day, I listened to the May 22 Town Council meeting and learned that the proposal was not only for 120 units, but would be a six-story building feet away from Nahon Street. I generally support development in town, but I don't support this proposal. And it's frustrating to know that citizens in town, along with town officials, have little to say about a project like this. I listened to the concerns raised by many of you at the May 22 meeting. Mr. Mayo, you shared that many, or some town, I don't want to say money, some town departments have raised concerns. Even Mass Housing asked the developer to revisit their plan, which would indicate that they also have concerns. And yet, even with all of those concerns, 40B guidelines may allow for this project to move forward. I'm here tonight to request that at an upcoming meeting, the details of our current 40B status be shared so that we can all understand how close we are to being compliant. Mr. Mayo mentioned that our 40B status could be shared with Mass Housing to show progress on what exactly, towards the, sorry. Mr. Mayo mentioned that our 40B status could be shared with Mass Housing to show progress toward the 10% requirement, but it didn't sound like we have a firm grasp on what exactly that looks like. I'm going to insert here, I feel like we've been talking about the 10% for like four or five years. And yet, I don't know where we are against that. I think it's critically important that we understand where we stand today, what projects are being discussed, and how they impact Wakefield's meeting that 10% threshold. I realize that some of those projects are still under discussion, but that shouldn't mean that we can't talk about them and understand what contribution that they have to our 10% so that we understand all of the projects that are being considered, not just the ones that are kind of approved and in progress. My hope is that this information will make a convincing argument that Wakefield is actively working towards our 10% goal and that Mass Housing will recognize that this project needs to be significantly reduced in size and scope. I respect that this is privately owned land, but as a town, we should be able to keep developments like this out of places where they don't belong. I understand that 40B rules make this more complicated, but a development on this, like this, on Nahon Street, isn't good for Wakefield and I hope that as, we as a town can figure out a way to get a more reasonable and responsible project built there. I look forward to hearing more details about our 40B status and how plan development gets us closer to the 10% goal. Thank you.
Janet Solis.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you. I'm not going to be quite as eloquent as the rest. I'm a lifelong resident of Wakefield. In fact, I live in the house that I grew up in. I raised my children in that house. Nahon Street used to be a quiet old road, believe it or not. And over the years, it has expanded to a major thoroughway in Wakefield. I cannot get out of my house from 2:00 in the afternoon till 5:00 at night. There is a constant stream of traffic. And unless some poor soul takes pity on me, I'm going to be sitting there until someone lets me go. I think traffic will come to a stop on Nahon Street, should you add that many more cars, you know. I work from home mostly, but there are times that I have to go out in the afternoon. And it's like I have to tie my appointments, well, wait a minute, this school gets out at this time and this school gets out at that time. And we also connect 128 to Route 1. It's just, it is a major thoroughway and it cannot support what is being proposed. I agree. I agree with everyone tonight. Compromise. We have lovely townhouse on the corner of Nahon Street, corner of Nahon and Main. We have a beautiful condo, 20 Nahon Street, maybe. We cannot have something that large in our neighborhood. It's going to destroy it. We also have, behind us, we have a wetland. Now, what is all that going to do? It's going to destroy the wetlands. So goodbye animals. It just, it doesn't make any sense. I saw this plan, I don't remember where, but I saw it like a year ago and I couldn't believe it. I was beside myself and I showed everybody the picture of what they wanted to build and, and I said, it just does not fit here. So that's my piece. And I hope you, I thank you for listening and I hope you take into consideration what this will do to our town. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Solis. And just before you go, would you mind stating your address for the record?
Oh, sorry, 26 Nahon Street.
That's okay. Thank you so much.
That's what I have.
Great. Anyone else in the studio who is looking to speak? Nope. All right, no one we missed. Sherry, who do we have online?
Well, the ones that did sign up, I do not see online, so I wasn't quite sure if they're in studio. Michael Turner.
So we have not heard from Michael Turner? Sorry, we don't think, we don't know if he's online, you said?
Yeah, I do not see him online, no. Kayla McKay Smith. And Maureen Melting.
Great. And Ms. Melting is in studio. I think she declined to speak, if I'm remembering, if I'm understanding correctly.
I want to talk about 119, but I would like to know more about it.
Okay.
But a quick follow-up, one thing.
I was going to say, come on up to the microphone. Well, no, if you would like getting the microphone so that people online can hear you.
Just to follow up on someone else, do we know the status of the 40B in this town? How close are we to 10%? Does anyone know? Get the book out.
So, Mr. Mayo, maybe if we could hold that question and maybe speak to that just when we get to that agenda item. But I think the point, you know, Ms. Melting and Ms. Vayer that you made is a good one and one that I know is a little bit of a moving target. So if we aren't able to answer that during the course of today's discussion, I know we all have, you know, the same questions. We will cover it at a meeting.
That's fine. Because like I said, I want to see everything about 119 before I actually talk about it. Parking and number of cars is my big issue, but I'll talk about it another time.
Okay.
But thank you.
All right. Last call for any participation? Yes, if you could come on up and state your name and address at the microphone.
I knew it.
Hi. Hi, everyone. I am Kim Hackett Folly. I live at 21A Summer Street. My concern, so as a former Board of Appeals member, we are always told to treat each project as an individual project, correct? Like, something comes to us and it's, maybe it's the same developer, but we were always told to treat each project as an individual project. My question is, for the town, when do we stop contractors who continuously cut corners, don't tell the truth, and lie blatantly to the board, to the fellow neighbors? When do we stop them from developing in our town? Tell me that.
Thank you.
Welcome.
You okay? National television might be a stretch. We have a wide reach, but not that far. All right. Sherry, anyone online who's come on since we started?
No, we're all set. All set.
Okay. Well, thank you, everyone, for attending and for the comment today. And so that's a good segue to item number five, which are the proposed 40B developments. So we have on the agenda two developments, 32 Nahon Street, which we will hear about today. We also had the residents at Nahon, 119 to 135. They did reach out to us today and ask to postpone to a meeting in July or August so they could seek some additional input from Mass Housing. So we won't be covering that one today, but that will be back before this council. Mr. Mayo, just kind of carrying forward, I think, the question that was raised during public participation. Do we have the data, do you have the data in front of you around where we are?
Yes, yes, I do. It's not, it's not as crisp as I would like it, and I will explain why it's not as crisp as we would like it. Whenever subsidized housings are built in Wakefield, either a 40B project or a inclusionary zoning project that we have, you know, that aren't 40B, but 18% of their units need to be, need to be affordable. There's an approval by the Board of Appeals. There is a housing agreement or a document that is signed between the developer, the town, and Mass Housing. And those units need to be built. So we can't just have things approved that hang around forever. Eventually, they're not going to count towards our 10%. So that same thing happens with the 40B project. The 40B project is approved, although that may go on the subsidized housing list that the state views right away. If it's not built, it doesn't count. It eventually comes off. So for instance, that there is a 24-unit 40B rental project in Greenwood that was approved three or four years ago. It hasn't been built. So where those 24 units counted towards our numbers, now they don't. So it is a moving target, so I can't, I can't give you that crisp number. But I will say this, is that if we were to add up everything that has been approved, okay, we are right at about 10% of the new census number, okay? So that's really where we are. We're about, you know, if they all came in and were built, that were approved, you know, we're right at, right about at that 10%. And in fact, the project on Broadway that maybe some of you have gone to meetings on, on the corner of Broadway and Main, that would actually push us a little bit over 10%. And that's over the new census number. In 2020, you know, census number came out that said that Wakefield had 11,305 households. So our 10% number went up from what it was before, which was about 10,500. So that's where we are right now. What we have done, and what we can really point to, what I alluded to at the meeting two weeks ago, or three weeks ago, was that we've shown great growth in Wakefield in affordable units over the past year. Okay? And if you looked at everything that has been approved and has actually started building in the last year, we're probably looking at, we probably built about 3% of our housing, 3% out of the 10 that we needed last year. And that's because Tarrant Lane that's on 170, that's on 89 Hawken Street, has 173 units. That's a big chunk that goes towards that. So that's a great help in our reaching our 40B threshold. So these are the, talk about the projects, where they are, you know, the neighborhood, the effect on our infrastructure, the effect on the wetlands. That is certainly a huge argument that I'm not going to take away. But also, we've made great strides as a community in actually promoting the ability to build affordable housing. So that's another item that we are talking to the state about. In fact, in the comment letter that, the preliminary comment letter that we sent out on 119, 135, figuring we'd have more information tonight, it points to that fact as well. So that's where we're looking at right now. I wish I had actual numbers for you because I'll tell you, if some of these aren't built, then I've got to pull them back off, or the state pulls them off until they go on. So not a great, not a great answer, but it's what we're dealing with.
Thank you, Mr. Mayo. So we've had our public participation periods. We won't be taking questions, but I hope that context is helpful. And again, we'll, Steve, if we can continue to share that information publicly and in these meetings as the numbers get updated, that would be great. All right. Moving on to the 32 Nahon Street project. Sherry, do we have the development team on?
I'm looking. I don't. I don't, I don't see them. Steve, do you know who was joining?
They're not in studio.
Not in studio. Would have been Scott Green, Turney Haverdy.
No.
Okay. I suggest, maybe, Mr. Chairman, we move on and see what happens? I don't know.
Yes. So let's table that for now. Sherry, if they do come on, if you could let us know.
Absolutely.
All right. Let's move on to item six.
Your comments were effective.
Yeah.
Wow.
All right. Let's move on to item six, licenses. 6A is a one-day liquor license for a private event at Sentinel Group 100 Quantipowett Parkway. Do we have a motion?
So moved. Second?
Great. Motion is moved and seconded. Any discussion? All right. Seeing none, we'll take a roll call vote. Counselor McLean?
Vote yes.
Counselor Vincent?
Yes.
Counselor Smith Galvin?
Yes.
Counselor Butt?
Yes.
Counselor Dobrowski?
Aye.
And myself is yes. That's 6-0. Next, item 6B is a one-day liquor license for a private event at St. Joseph's Church. Is there a motion?
So moved. Second?
Second. Any discussion? All right. Hearing none. The motion on the tables for a one-day liquor license. Counselor McLean?
Yes.
Counselor Vincent?
Yes.
Counselor Smith Galvin?
Yes.
Counselor Butt?
Yes.
Counselor Dobrowski?
Aye.
And myself, yes. Sherry, that's 6-0. And then finally, item 6C, a common vicular license. None of us ever pronounce that correctly, but one day we'll learn. Common vic license for Lisa's Hero located at 650 Main Street. Do I have a motion?
So moved. Second?
Any discussion? All right. Proceeding to a roll call vote. Counselor McLean?
Yes.
Counselor Vincent?
Yes.
Counselor Smith Galvin?
Yes.
Counselor Butt?
Yes.
Counselor Dobrowski?
Aye.
And myself, yes. That's 6-0 as well. All right. Item seven, American Rescue Plan Act update. Mr. Mayo, this is you, I believe?
Certainly. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As we discussed with the council, I guess at least one quarter ago, or at least, we would give quarterly updates on the ARPA funding that had been approved by votes of the town council and/or some items that we had at town meeting, and show where progress has been made on these and, you know, what still needs to be outstanding. So hopefully, everyone can see this at home. Always a little bit of a reminder that Wakefield's town share of ARPA funds was a little over $8 million. 2.8 million was the town and 5.2 million was county money. And I always say this, the reason why Wakefield gets county money is because it had to be a nationwide, you know, fairness. And at many areas of the country, the county actually runs a lot more of the services than we do in Massachusetts for the communities. So I think the federal government, and thank God, they felt that it was fair for us to get what would be a county share because there is no real Middlesex County services. So, you know, that brings us up over $8 million and I think some of us have grown up in county governments and you can understand why that is. So we do have a history of ARPA expenditures. And in fiscal year '22, we did use some of it during the budgets, budget cycle for positions at town hall, police, some police positions, and $400,000 for the schools. That was in fiscal year '22. Remember, we were coming out of COVID and we needed that for some learning loss issues. In fiscal year '23, basically even at town hall, we did bring in a big upgrade in Health Department that we talked about. And these were all votes that were taken by the town council and town meeting in these cases. Schools, 363. And we did actually supplement some of those budgets at a vote of the town council on 4/24/2023. You may remember, that was for police and fire overtime mainly for last year. In fiscal year '24, which is the fiscal year we're going to enter, $50,000 for the Health Department, $200,000 for the School Department, and $100,000 for Health. So that brings us up to 1.6 in that bucket there. We may recall that earlier than that, we had used some ARPA funds for school and first responder overtime, contact tracing. This was really getting into the throes, or we were in the throes of COVID at the time. Test kits, clinics, covering the cost of elections and town meeting. You remember that they were very spread out and cost a lot of money. We had tents, we had heaters, we had everything to make that work, keep it safe. Again, Fire Department overtime. And we did do the FIT Court that at least I need to get to more often. But the FIT Court is open for business and I hear it's doing very well. So that fast forwards to, we did have some money left over and we decided, as a council, you know, we actually did some outreach to the public and we came back to the council with a listing of things that we might want to want to do. And the council did actually approve these amounts. As you recall, we were, this was in November of 2022. As you'll recall, in that time, there was a great concern about energy prices, particularly home heating. There was oil prices and gas prices that skyrocketed. There was oil prices and gas prices that skyrocketed. So we decided to put aside some money for ARPA to cover that issue. I'm going to talk a little bit more about the Energy Assistance Fund at the end because I have some particular slides on that. But $72,000 has been expended there at this point in time. Lake Quantapowett cleanup and vets, this is the vets field area. Most of this has been done, has been the engineering part of this. This is redoing that vets field parking lot and cleaning up the stormwater into that area. Putting the Julie Smith Galvin bathroom into that area. So that is really going forward. You're going to see a lot more about that in the next few months. And I think at our next update, you're going to see maybe all of that money expended.
I assume we'll continue referring to it as the Julie Smith Galvin bathroom?
All the service, and that's what I'm going to be remembered for.
Just a little sliver of it. Lake pathways. These are the pathways on the north half side of the lake that wind in and out of some of those streets there. All of that money is for construction or refurbishing of the pathways. None of it is going to be used for engineering. We're doing that engineering in-house. So again, nothing has been expended there. I think you're going to see again a lot more at our next update at the end of the year. But that's where we are on that one. Rail Trail and Wakefield Mobility, we have actually signed that contract. So that, you're going to see that kicking off more next week. I will tell you that the, you're seeing at the trailhead some construction right now. You're seeing sidewalks and you're seeing other items going in where they can put bollards and they can put the pedestrian lights and stuff. That was part of a grant, so that's not part of this. So that's actually extra money, which is great. On tree replacement, we have not spent the ARPA money on tree replacement. We have spent other FEMA money on tree replacement. But I'm very happy to report that we were given or granted a grant from DCR in the amount of $40,000. And this is to actually map out a Wakefield urban tree plan where you will have every tree in town, and we've talked about this and that was part of our goals. That will be where they are, what they are, what we need to do, how we will work those out. So that we were just granted, that in conjunction, that's going to take about three months to do the plan. And then we'll be able to use the whole $150,000 on trees. You would not replace any trees right now unless you had to just because of the weather. Although it doesn't feel that way these last couple of weeks, a lot of rain. But we don't want to plant trees and have them die. You're going to see a lot more in the summer being planted. What we planted now is actually money that we got years ago from the microburst that just came in from FEMA. So that's good. Sidewalk expansion, you're seeing a lot of that work going on. You're going to see a lot going on this summer. We're just like a couple of months behind, particularly in Lowell Street and other areas. So that's going to be ratcheted up. WCAT expenses, we appropriated 137. I think the amount came to 136, 750 on that one. MWA water truck, that is, will be in shortly. I'm hoping that we'll have it in. And it is going to be wrapped in the Wakefield logo. It's going to really look nice. The price was a little bit more than $55,000, but we worked that out in the Water Enterprise account, so that looks really good. And I'd actually hope to have a picture of that truck tonight, but I don't. But I will send that out to the board as soon as I can. I think that's going to be great at events. It is, we have to, we use the MWA truck or trucks now. We have to really plan well in advance to get them because they're popular. And when we have these, we'll have our own. I think we'll have some great events we can have them at all the time. Conference room, Zoom hybrid upgrades, we have the plans in place. Actually, this is so Zoom can be better or in all of the conferences, particularly the Public Safety Building. Actually, the IT department, Sheri and I, are going on a field trip next Wednesday to see these in action. And in talking to some of the counselors, we are really looking at screens being brought in and moved around, like some of you talked about in offices that you've been in. So I think we're going to see that coming up shortly. The ADA swing is on target. That'll be put at the Galvin, excuse me, at the Dolbeer Playground. We're redoing that playground this summer. Obviously, we don't do them during the school year because it would be too destructive on the kids. So that'll be done, you know, July, when the kids get out, at the end of June, July. Civil War Monument Evaluation, that cost us $9,850. So we have $150,000 left over in the $10,000 appropriation. And on the title searches that actually, this was for the Open Space Plan and some of the tax titled properties or town-owned properties that we had. Really making sure that we actually own them because there are many instances in tax title property that these takings may have been done 20, 30, 40, 50 years ago. And they maybe weren't quite closed out the way they should. So there are about 85 of those properties and they're $250 a title. I have a bunch of them that I'm actually enjoying reading the title searches, going back to my old job. Do you want me to send you some, Tom?
Yeah.
Yeah, Tom wants to read some too. Very riveting stuff. And 85 times 250 is 21, 250. I would leave that money in there because there may be some follow-up that we're going to need to do some cleanup on those right there. So of the total that's been approved, the 3.8 million, 1,364,800 has been spent to date. And as I promised, I did want to talk about the Energy Assistance Fund because there actually are some pretty good numbers and some graphics here. So we kicked this off in November, which, you know, was towards, well, towards the beginning of the season. But it, you know, we ended up servicing 118 households. And the reason why we got such a late start is because candidly, you know, we really wanted to make sure that the individuals were going through the state and actually getting vetted through the state and getting money through the state. And then we would supplement that on top of it. We found out that the state was very slow in vetting the people in question. And so we actually kind of turned that around and said, listen, we're going to take a look at this ourselves. And we kicked it a little bit early, but the state eventually did catch up. So whatever we gave people, which was, you know, $750 for oil or $500 for gas and electric, it really did, it's really been mainly doubled because the state kicked them there too. So we served 118 households, which in our numbers had 228 residents. Interestingly enough, those between the ages of 60 and over were 55% of the total. There were 20 unique heating providers. And what that really means is that there were 19 oil companies and Wakefield Municipal Gas and Light Department. We found doing this is that actually the 19 oil companies really did the greatest job of spreading the word. They thought, they said, you know, this is wonderful. We have clients, other clients in Wakefield that are having trouble making ends meet. And they helped spread the word, you know, to the clients and get back to that. It was really, really good, really happy with that. And, you know, we do have a lot of people on gas, so they were there. So total awarded was 71,250. And there was a lot of staff and extra overtime, so we kind of added that in to give you an idea. Although we expensed 71, 750 out of the project. So I think that this, again, we have a few years to use this money up. I would certainly recommend that we leave this in there, we run this program again. We can start much earlier this year than we did mid-November last year because we just appropriated money on November 14th. This is a year-over-year comparison of what actually happened in the industry. These are the state approvals where you can see they really jumped over the last few years, a big increase in state subsidies for people in our area. So this is not just Wakefield, obviously, but you can see that there was a lot of that going on just in our region in general, out of the Lynn office. And, you know, we did printed electron posters, we had articles with Council of Aging newsletters, flyers, Facebook promotion, announcements on the website, personal outreach and collaboration with MWOG and local oil providers. And I will tell you that our best sources of marketing were the oil companies who were really, I mean, I spoke to a lot of them that called in and really thought this was great that the town was doing this. And they were sharing their stories with how, you know, sad it was that their customers were choosing between, you know, keeping things very, very cold or what have you. So it was really, I think they were very grateful and we were grateful. So we do have, at this point, unappropriated ARPA funds of a little over 2 million, which takes into account everything that happened at town meeting in May. And remember that we need to appropriate that by 12/31/2024. So we have a little bit over a year and a half on that. And they need to be spent by the end of 2026. So we have time. I think that, you know, councils should be thinking about some other items that we'd be looking at there. But I think right now, when we have our update in the fall, we're going to see that a lot more of these projects will have been done and things like that. So that is all I have for you, but ready to answer any questions that you have, Mr. Chairman.
Great, thank you, Mr. Mayo. Any questions or comments from the council? Counselor Butt?
So Steve, thank you so much for that. The quarterly, it's so great just to see the good that's being done. I, two comments. So I, congratulations on the money for trees. That's great. We know everyone's fans of trees in town. But I also, the Julie Restoff area, I just want to remind everyone.
Now with the rest of.
It's like, you're with a pit. I want to remind everyone that we actually got an earmark for that, right? So I want to be mindful of us, right? Like two years ago, we did.
It was like a 75er there.
Yeah, 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 75.
Yes, we have some money from the state for that.
Yes.
This is on top of that, right?
Right, this is on top of that, yes.
So, but I just want to be mindful of highlighting and remembering when we do have other money for some of these projects. So I just, because we haven't used that money and we did get it, there's a check somewhere for that bathroom.
That will be, that'll be rolled into the project. We're going to need that for that entire project.
So I think, I think as much as you can kind of highlight that next time too of like, there is some, you know, the 44,000 or whatever for the trees, which will be great money. I know we've used other money, got another money for the rail trail. But I think things like that, walkability, and I think there's opportunity as the new budget starts of trying to get some more money to support some of these projects. So just wanted to mention that.
Thank you, we will absolutely do that.
Thank you. Counselor Dabrowski?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Steve, thank you for this, this is super helpful. Two things, one is with the bathrooms, do we have a sense of what that would be, that would cost all in?
Oh, for that entire area?
The bathroom portion of it at least? If not, that's okay.
I do not have that. I think that'll be, well, it depends on what we do, right? And we are finalized no plans. There will also be some public outreach on that because that's a very sensitive subject, sensitive area. We want to really make sure that blends in well. So, and I can give you exactly the cost of that as, carve that out from the whole, which a lot of it's the parking lot and stuff like that.
I think that would make sense because the other thing that I've really noticed is that for anyone who's been down basically where like the boat rentals are, there's the playground there. And I know WCNA has done a lot of good work in really sprucing that up. But if you're a parent with kids, you understand that bathrooms are kind of key, especially when you're at a playground. And I know we have those porta potties right now, which are kind of like, not uncightly, but I'd like to maybe, you know, think about how we could maybe integrate if, once we get design information and have this kind of vetted. I'd like to maybe explore that area too because that is a well-used playground. But when you've got a three-year-old or a four-year-old and they have to go to the bathroom, where are you supposed to go when you're down there, you know? And porta potties are really tough for kids and that's such a family-friendly area. And how many people are out, you know, when we have events and things there too on the Lower Common? It's just so, it's such a popular area. People are playing there, they're making use of the space, a lot of events. So I think that should maybe be a priority we think about and see where our numbers wise. The other piece is something that I had mentioned at the retreat. And I would really like to explore further the idea of a public-private partnership where we're focused on facade improvements for our businesses and seeing ways in which we can assist our businesses, especially in the downtown area and the Greenwood area. And it serves a lot of benefits, not the least of which is an improvement of the aesthetic of the downtown, which I think is really important. And I know that a lot of other communities have, both within the state but also across the country, have similar type programs. So I'd like to maybe explore what are, what the town's buy-in could be for that and how we could perhaps leverage those dollars with maybe some of our local banks and a matching program. And so, you know, businesses also, you know, put up something too. But I think there's an opportunity between facades and signage to really improve the aesthetics as well as help these businesses in a really positive way. So those are just two things that we're just kind of.
And we're looking at that in the grant world as well.
Great.
So that's something that, you know, if you match a grant, local bank, ARPA, you can really cut.
Right, so that's something, you know, like a whole, you know, a combination of those things together could be a meaningful program with, for very, very little dollars for us.
Absolutely.
I think the Savings Bank actually already has.
We have one through the chamber.
Program.
Yeah.
A facade, I think it's for a facade.
There were low-interest loans.
There are low-interest loans, no, exactly. But I think there's a lot of learning that's already been done there.
Absolutely.
That might be able to be tapped into.
Yeah.
And Mr. Mayo, on the topic of the vets field plan, I believe based on our lake policy, that actually will have to come back to the council for review and public comment. So that will be on a future agenda.
On the vets bathroom.
Correct.
Yep.
Counselor Vincent?
Thank you, Chair Chines. Just to add first to Counselor Dabrowski's comment, having access to the bathroom is not just important when you're there with your three-year-old. When you're over 60, you'll need one too. To add on to Counselor Butt's comment, it's also important for us to keep in mind some of those projects where we've applied for grants. We should be hearing this month of whether we got that grant from the Massachusetts Preservation Society for the Civil War Monument. And if we get a matching grant, that's a significant amount of money that we otherwise don't have to use in ARPA funds. Thank you.
I'm sure our clerk will include your comments, by the way, in the minutes for today on bathroom access.
If she doesn't, I will have them.
Counselor McLean, do you have anything? I just want to make sure I don't forget you.
No, I would just simply say we'll have to look carefully at any additions we make to the lake because the lake is very sensitive to many, many people in the town. So, you know, it may be that it would be nice to have two bathrooms, but we've lived without one for some time at the playground and we'll talk further about it in the future.
Any other comments or questions? All right, hearing none, thank you, Mr. Mayo. Ms. Dalton, do we have the 32 Nahand Street folks online yet?
We do not.
All right, moving on to item number eight, bond anticipation notes. Mr. Mayo, I think you have a very long motion to read to us.
I do have a very long motion. So before I read the very long motion, let me explain because I think the people at home want to know. So we, you know, we go through a series of bonding or bond anticipation notes, which is really short-term borrowing that we then roll into a larger bond. So today, we're looking to, and everything's been approved by town council and town meeting and finance committee. So this is just doing the actual action that the town approved already. So right now, we're looking for 10 million, $500,000 worth of bonds, bond anticipation notes. 8 million is for the new high school. And 8 million, it's really doing the plans and doing the testing and things like that. So there's not really any construction in here. That's going to come later. And 2.5 million is the third portion of the road policy. So all of those items together add up to $10.5 million. So what happens when we go out for a bond or for a bond anticipation note? We actually get a credit rating. And it's not much unlike that you get your credit score when you're going for a mortgage or, you know, for a house, you know, home mortgage, you're going to get a credit score and your loan office will say, hey, here's your credit score. And, you know, based on that, you may qualify for a better rate. So luckily, over the last number of years, maybe five or 10 years now, Wakefield has been rated as a AAA, which is the highest rating you can get. Which means that we borrow with less money, we're at a better risk. So I did share with the council that we went out for this 10 million, 10.5 million dollar offering. And the net rate that we got was 3.7452%. And I did share with the council that I really wasn't all that happy with it. I always want a lower rate and that's just how I am. Because I remember when rates were a lot lower years ago and some of the counselors did come back and say, Steve, you can get 5% on a CD now. The fact that you're borrowing 10.5 million for the town at 3.7 is really good. So you're going to hear a lot of numbers tonight in the note, in the vote. But what happens is we went out to borrow $10.5 million. The rate is 4.5%, but we're actually being paid points. Years ago, when you bought a house, you paid points to the back. Years ago, when you bought a house, you paid points to the back. Wall Street is actually paying Wakefield points of about $54,000. So the net interest cost to the town is 3.7452. So I guess we should be very happy with that. I wish it was, you know, 2.7452, or then I wouldn't be happy, then either had one, 1.7452. I'm getting too much like Counsel Dabrowski did. So anyways, I have to make a long note of motion, and I'm sorry for the public to hear this, but this is what is required. So I will move, Mr. Chairman. We hereby determine, in accordance with General Law Chapter 70B, that the cost of the memorial high school construction project authorized by vote of the town passed on January 28, 2023, Article I, being financed with proceeds of a portion of the notes defined below, together with all of the bonds and notes of the town previously issued to pay cost of this project, does not exceed the portion of the total cost of the project that is not being paid by the school facilities grant, and we do hereby approve the issuance of notes and bonds to finance this project under General Law Chapter 70B. Further voted to approve the sale of $10 million, $500,000, 4.5% general obligation bond anticipation notes, the notes of the town dated June 15, 2023, and payable February 23, 2024, to Jeffries LLC at par in accrued interest, if any, plus a premium of $54,600. Further voted that in connection with the marketing of the sale of the notes, the preparation and distribution of a notice of sale and preliminary official statement dated May 17, 2023, and a final official statement dated May 24, 2023, each in such form as may be approved by the town treasurer, be and are hereby ratified, confirmed, approved, and adopted. Further voted that the town treasurer and the town council be and hereby are authorized to execute and deliver a significant offense disclosure undertaking compliance with SEC Rule 15(c)(12) in such form as may be approved by bond council of the town, which undertaking shall be incorporated by reference in the notes for the benefit of the holders of the notes from time to time. Further voted, excuse me, that we authorize and direct the town treasurer to establish a post-issuance federal tax compliance procedures and continuing disclosure procedures in such forms as the town treasurer and bond council deem sufficient, or if such procedures are currently in place, review and update said procedures in order to monitor and maintain the tax-exempt status of the notes and to comply with relevant securities laws. Further voted that any certificates or documents relating to the notes, collectively the documents, may be executed in several counterparts, each of which shall be regarded as an original, and all of which shall constitute one and the same document. Delivery of an executed counterpart of a signature paid to a document by electronic mail in a PDF file or by other electronic transmissions shall be effective as delivery of a manual executed counterpart signature paid to such document, and electronic signatures on any of the documents shall be deemed original signatures for the purpose of the documents and all maps relating thereto, having the same legal effect as original signatures. Further voted that each members of the town council, the town clerk, and the town treasurer be and hereby are authorized to take any and all such actions and execute and deliver such certificates, receipts, or other documents as may be determined by them or any of them to be necessary or convenient to carry into effect the provisions of the four voting going votes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Is there a motion to that effect?
Still moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Any parts that anyone wants Mr. Mayo to read again to clarify?
Mr. Chairman, I know it's as turgid and stilted as anything I've ever written, but I didn't write it.
It's interesting that they wanted wet signatures, even though they say that electronic recover, but I can't do.
All right. There being no discussion, we'll take a roll call vote on the motion. Counsel McLean?
I would vote yes, with thanks to the town administrator for not making me read that document.
Counsel Vincent?
Yes.
Counsel Smith Galvin?
Yes.
Counselor Butt?
Yes.
Counsel Dabrowski?
Aye.
And myself, yes as well, Sherry Six Zero.
Okay.
Great. All right, let's move on to item number nine, appointments. Nine A is appointments to the youth council. Sherry, do we have Catherine Dingra on the meeting?
Yes, we do. She's coming over right now.
Great.
Yeah, she should be there. Hi, Catherine, can you hear us?
I can. Can you, can you hear me?
We can.
Yes. Okay.
Great. Catherine, would you mind just starting to give just an overview of the appointment process and the committee that was established to review the youth council applicants?
Sure. So we worked hard with the youth, I'm actually wearing my youth council sweatshirt right now. I have to represent. We worked with the youth council members to promote and recruit for applicants for the '23-'24 youth council season, and we were delighted we got 21 applicants. Unfortunately, we have less spots than applicants. So what we ended up doing is I had all of, I reached out to some of our alumni, and they did interviews with all the new applicants. So they had back-to-back interviews with new applicants over two nights, and then presented me with their choices in order. And then what we did was, with all of our returning applicants, is I asked our chair and our subcommittee chair to give me a list of applicants that they think should return. I also looked at attendance rates. I looked at their liaison position and engagement in meetings, and that's how we came up with the slate presented before you.
Great. Thank you, Catherine. And just for the council's benefit, the number of appointments, I know there's some information in an early version of our packet that was incorrect. We do have, based on a vote we took last July, we do have, sorry, 11 high school slots to appoint and four middle school slots, for a total of 15. So with that, is there a motion?
I can make motion.
Counsel Butt?
So, excuse me, let me find the list. Can I, can I just add, sorry, I was re-looking at their applications. These students are brilliant. They really make Wakefield proud. You read their resumes, and they are doing amazing things and going amazing places. Just very proud of Wakefield students right now. Should I do one at a time?
Or? Up to you.
How about I do the recommendations for the high school appointees? We have 11 positions, you said?
Correct. 11 voting positions.
Okay, so I have a motion to appoint Amen Achman, Elzain Albadine Atwe, Juliana Spalding, Madeline Naper, Olivia Wall, Michael Lyons, Vanessa Wesley, William Buswell, Thomas Berinado, Maya Palick, Sophia Panagetti, as full-voting members of the youth council.
Is there a second? All right, motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. We'll take a roll call vote. Counsel McLean?
Oh, yes.
Counsel Vincent?
Yes.
Counsel Smith Galvin?
Yes.
Counsel Butt?
Yes.
Counsel Dabrowski?
Aye.
And I will abstain on that. So that's 5-0 with one abstention. Sherry?
Okay.
Do we have another motion?
Yes. Can I also appoint Erin Caldo as a non-voting high school member of the youth council?
Yes, is there a second?
Second.
All right, any discussion?
Yeah, just, sorry, Chair Chines, how many non-voting members are there?
So there's been no limit. It's up to the discretion of the council.
All right, thank you.
Any other discussion or questions? All right, hearing none, we'll take a motion on appointing Erin Caldo to a non-voting appointment. Counsel McLean?
Yes.
Counsel Vincent?
Yes.
Counsel Smith Galvin?
Yes.
Counselor Butt?
Yes.
Counsel Dabrowski?
Aye.
And I will abstain as well. So 5-0, Sherry?
Thank you.
And then I'd like to make one more motion. I'd like to move to appoint Annabeth Gorill, James Brogna, and Nathaniel Chines to the youth council from the middle school.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, any discussion? All right, seeing none, we'll proceed to a roll call vote. Counsel McLean?
Yes.
Counsel Vincent?
Yes.
Counsel Smith Galvin?
Yes.
Counseler Butt?
Yes.
Counsel Dabrowski?
Aye.
And I will abstain again, though rather proudly this time. Great. That's, so Sherry, that's 5-0 with one abstention.
Got it, thanks.
Excellent. Well, thank you very much. Appreciate that. And can I just say, you know, coming off of being the council's liaison to the youth council for the last, I think, two years now, I just want to echo Counselor Butt's comments. This is really an extraordinary group of students, and I've been incredibly proud to get to know some of them over the last couple of years, and really am impressed that, you know, we continue to see such interest and such leadership. And Catherine, thank you as well for your support and your mentorship for many of these students as well. All right, we'll move on to item 9B, special municipal employee appointment. Mr. Mayo, would you want to just give some context here?
I think I'll, Mr. Mullen does it so well.
All right, Mr. Mullen.
Mr. Chairman, as you can imagine, applications just poured in from lawyers who wanted to do free work for the town. So the background for this is that I generally represent the town of Wakefield. However, part of my job is to represent and advise the zoning board of appeals and other boards that do real estate approvals, and therefore, when the town itself is an applicant before such a board, I would arguably have a conflict, or at least it would be awkward for me to represent the town before the board that I advise. You can only be on one side of the table at a time. So the town, long ago, decided that it would seek special counsel to represent any town effort to develop land if it had to go before one of the boards that I do advise and represent. We are fortunate that there is one exceptionally talented and experienced lawyer in town who was willing to donate his services in connection with that on this project, the high school project, and on previous projects, and he's done an excellent job. But he could have faced a serious penalty if the board, if the council had not taken cognizance of the fact that if he were to represent the town on such a matter, he would technically become a municipal employee for purposes of the state ethics law. And then he would not be able to represent his many private clients before the boards at Wakefield. That, of course, is economically infeasible for Attorney McGreal, as it would be for any lawyer who does a substantial amount of work before local boards. And so your board designated that position, and by that position, I mean a lawyer who represents the town of Wakefield before a land use board for free, designated that position as a special municipal employee position. And what that means is he is free, under the state ethics law, to represent other clients in completely unrelated matters before town boards. So very long-winded way of saying that we wanted, as we always do, to get the services of a good lawyer for free, representing the town before the ZBA and other boards, and we have to go out to bid, as it were, or your board has internal rules that require it, notwithstanding that, as my little joke at the start suggested, there really wasn't an awful lot of competition for this free work. So the one applicant is Attorney McGreal. Again, I've expressed my opinion of him. I think he is excellent. He is, for what it's worth, the go-to guy that I turn to when I have, when I'm scratching my head trying to understand a thorny zoning issue. And he has served the town well in the past, and I recommend that you appoint him for this position in connection with the high school.
And I agree with Town Council. Attorney McGreal represented us on the Galvin School, represented us on the Public Safety Building, and represented us on the Walton School, the work that we did there, all for nothing, and many, many hours of, that he could have been building someone else, so it's very appreciative on our case.
Thank you. Do we have a motion?
Still moved to appoint Brian McGreal to a special municipal employee.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Yes, Counsel?
I'll just add, as the owner of a law firm, I can say that this is not a light undertaking, and Mr. McGreal has given his services for years, and so I do, I just want to extend my thanks as well on behalf of the town for what he's doing, especially with this project, which is a sizable one.
Not a small one.
Right, indeed, yes.
Great. Any other discussion? All right, hearing none, we'll take a roll call vote. Counsel McLean?
Yes.
Counsel Vincent?
Yes.
Counsel Smith Galvin?
Yes.
Counseler Butt?
Yes.
Counsel Dabrowski?
Aye.
And myself, yes. Sherry, that's 6-0.
Okay, great.
Great. I'm going to assume that we still don't have our Nahand Street friends online?
Unfortunately, no.
Well, with my apologies to the members of the public who are attending in person, it looks like we're hearing from them tonight.
I will follow up with them tomorrow. So, sorry about that.
Great. Thank you. All right, let's move on to item number 10, flag policy. So just as some context on this, and then I'll ask Mr. Mayo to speak about one issue that's come up. I wanted to remind sort of us as a council, as well as the public, that the flag policy and any decisions that we make with regard to what flags we fly on town property are the sole purview of the town council. And so while we've received, as Mr. Mayo will talk about, some suggestions from members of the public, as well as from other boards, on changes to the flag policy, you know, we as the town council do have the discretion to decide how to handle that. That means that we can vote to accept those changes, we could vote to not accept those changes, or we can choose not to consider them at all. And so I want to make that context, because again, as our policy states, and as the requirements of the shirt-lip case state, you know, for, you know, for anything that's flown on town property, that is, again, the sole purview and sole discretion of the town council. So with that, Mr. Mayo, I know we had, you know, certainly one change we wanted to bring to the council for consideration tonight after discussion between you and I.
Correct, correct. In our current flag policy, it states that no flag or banner may be displayed above the flag of the United States, and that's not going to change, of course, and no flag other than the POW/MIA flag shall be displayed below the American flag on any town flag pole. We actually have an existing condition for many years since I can, since the junior high was dedicated to General John Galvin, and I forget the, I forget the year that happened. You know off the top of your head, Bob, maybe you know. But I know there was another Mayo involved in that, Dr. Mayo was involved in that territory. I should have called him today, would have remembered it like that. But that is flown there first, since I can remember the old site and the new site, so in your package with a stake on it is that, with the exception of the flag pole, the Galvin Middle School, which will may, I think we should replace that, which shall display the four-star flag indicating the rank of General John Galvin beneath the American flag. And that, I think, corrects an existing condition that I think was never an issue with anybody, including members of the Veterans Advisory Board, that I were certainly for that.
Is there a motion to that effect?
Still moved.
Second.
Second. Thank you. Discussion. And Mr. Mayo, if I could ask you again, just to read, so which section of the policy again?
Section three. It's actually in the packet, and it should be highlighted in the vendor in yellow, if you're looking at it.
Got it. So section three, got it, okay.
And we could change that, with the exception of the flag pole, the Galvin Middle School, which shall display the four-star flag indicating the rank of General John Galvin.
All right, I'll ask the council if there's any objection to changing what's in the packet to correct the grammar on that phrase. No objection from anyone? Just don't get to the second. All right, hearing none. So the motion then would be to add that clause, with the exception of the flag pole at the Galvin Middle School, which shall display the four-star flag indicating the rank of General John Galvin beneath the American flag. flag. Counselor Dabrowski?
I would just suggest that we may consider adding it. And Counselor Vincent, I'll defer to you on this, being a veteran. But my understanding is that when there's an Army regulation that technically that flag should only be flown if General Galvin was in the building, or if he was not deceased. And so in speaking with the Chair of the Veterans' Advisory Board, he had suggested that we at least acknowledge in the policy that we recognize the Army regulation in relation to this flag, and we're doing something that is different than that. And so I'm not looking to change what's there, but I think making some sort of addition to recognize that this is, for example, not in conformance with Army regulation relative to the flying of that flag.
Just a clarifying question on that. The regulation says that if he's in the building, which he's deceased, so he won't be in the building, or if he is deceased?
No, or once he is deceased. So basically, I guess my understanding is he at least needs to be in the building or alive to be in exact compliance with the Army regulations is what I understand. But in speaking with Paul Cancelier, he seemed to say that as long as we acknowledge that that regulation exists out there and we're departing from it, that's not an issue, I guess. But apparently just the recognition that there is an Army regulation in relation to how these flags would be flown in ordinary course. So I that's, I don't, can't say I know more than that, but I think it's pretty basic.
Maybe Ms. Dalton, if we can make sure that's reflected in the minutes so that we have a record of that conversation. I'd be reluctant to kind of edit the, amend the sort of motion on the fly if we don't actually know the citation for the regulation. But I think the point is well taken, and if we could just make sure that we've got a record of that.
And we can, I can go back, and we may want to add language at some later point that just makes that explicit. Some people looking at, understand that we considered that, and we're aware of the regulation, but we're making a slight departure from it.
The regulation is Army Regulation 84-10.
Of course you have that.
Yeah, promulgated 17 July 2020. I don't know that we need to put it into the flag policy. I think it's important that we acknowledge it. But we can, we can put it in there. I would want to talk to Paul to see exactly how he would propose putting it in there. I'm just not sure it needs to be put in, but we do need to recognize that it exists, and we're doing something. And the precedent has been set for many years with the flag being flown at the middle school, General Galvin's flag. So the precedent for flying it predates the updated regulation, which is 2020. So I'm just not sure whether it should go into the policy or not at this time.
I just wanted to flag everyone on, by no means, I support the flag. Yes, exactly. But I just wanted to put it out there so people were aware. I mean, I support, obviously, the General Galvin.
Maybe it could be a footnote or something.
I think probably somewhere we should at least acknowledge it. And we can come back to that when...
Yeah, we could have a footnote.
I can work, we can work on language, maybe, Bob, in that.
Any other discussion? So hearing done. Again, the motion is to add the phrase, with the exception of the flag pole at the Galvin Middle School, which shall display the four-star flag indicating the rank of General John Galvin beneath the American flag. So we'll move to a roll call vote. Counselor McLean?
Yes.
Counselor Vincent?
Yes.
Counselor Smith Galvin?
Yes.
Counselor Butt?
Yes.
Counselor Dabrowski?
Aye.
And myself, yes. Sheri, that's six, zero. Any other discussion related to flag policy? Counselor Dabrowski?
Yes, this is, this relates to the state flag, and that was also raised by Veterans' Advisory. I don't believe we currently provide for the state flag in our policy, if I'm not mistaken. Is that correct?
I don't think we have a card out for that.
I believe that it is not mentioned in the policy, but I'm looking at the policy on the fly on that one.
And two things. One, we do fly the state flag, the flag of the Commonwealth already in front of the Public Safety Building. And two, we have the Americala has two flag poles, and if there's not a designated flag on it, then it's a flag pole without a flag. So I think it would make sense to provide that we could have the state flag flying at times when there's not something else flying, at least on the secondary flag pole. And that also brings us into compliance with what's already happening at the Public Safety Building. So I would offer that as a suggestion.
Are there two flag poles at the Walton School?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, and I had a couple of questions. Oh, I'm sorry.
Nope, Mr. Vincent.
Chair Chines, I had a couple of questions for Mr. Mullen on this, too, especially concerning the Americala, because it's actually MGL Chapter Two, Section Six. I know our stuff said Section Six, but it's Chapter Two, Section Six. And in there, it says that you fly the flag over any main or administrative building of each public institution. Is the Americala Civic Center considered an administrative building considering the Recreation Department, which is the town department operates in there? Because if so, then that flag pole would apply to that building. But I didn't know that answer.
I'd have to take a look at the statute, of course, but from your description of it, it sounds to me like we'd be talking about the town hall.
Yeah, well, what the statute said is main and administrative building of each public institution. So I would consider the town hall the main building.
So the copy I have here says, "The flag of the United States and the flag of the Commonwealth shall be displayed on the main or administration building of each public institution of the Commonwealth."
So we don't have two flag poles at the town hall. So then the question is, we do have two at the Americala. So would that be considered an administrative building? And therefore, we would have, do we have to comply with Chapter Two, Section Six by flying the Commonwealth flag there when there aren't commemorative flags being flown? Because we don't have two flag poles at the main building, which is the town hall. That was my question.
Again, I would read this to mean that we should have the Commonwealth flag at the town hall. I wouldn't look at this and think, ah, it has to go at the Americala.
Yeah, I wasn't sure either. I just wanted to pose that question.
Other discussion? All right, hearing done. We'll move on to item 11, donation. Do we have a motion for that one?
I'm sorry, the, I thought we were going to hit the other piece about the request for the flag day flying. That was, it was separately identified as under 10.
So Counselor Dabrowski, if you'd like to speak to that?
Sure. So we have a request from the Veterans Advisory Board that on Flag Day, which is on the 14th of June, that only the American flag and the POW MIA flag fly in recognition of Flag Day. And the Veterans Advisory Board had voted on this. It was a unanimous vote based upon what they sent along, letters they sent along to us afterwards. And ostensibly, they're asking that no other flags except for the American flag and, again, the POW MIA. I know that we had a natural transition date already from the Pride flag to the Juneteenth flag, that I think was set for the 15th of June, which would be the day after Flag Day. So my motion is that we honor the Veterans Advisory Board's request by flying only the American flag and the POW MIA flag on Flag Day, and slide the transition day between the Pride flag and the Juneteenth by a day in essence. So we would, we would take down the Pride flag on the 13th tomorrow. We would have the American flag and POW MIA flag fly solely on the 14th, and we would raise the Juneteenth flag on the 15th.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
All right. Motion is made and seconded. Discussion. Counselor Vincent?
Thank you, Chair Chines. Couple quick things. Notwithstanding my procedural concerns regarding the flag policy, I recognize and accept that it's my responsibility to abide by and carry out the flag policy as approved by the town council. So therefore, I reviewed all three of these requests, and I reviewed our flag policy. And here's just a couple of things I found about the Flag Day request. I view this more as a request, as a flag request than I do an amendment to our flag policy. I don't see it as an amendment to our flag policy because Flag Day is already recognized national observance. It was recognized back in 1949. So I wouldn't necessarily, I wouldn't be an advocate for amending the flag policy to put this in. But I understand where you're coming from as far as the request to take the flag down one day earlier so that only the American flag and POW MIA flag are flying on the 14th.
Can I just interrupt for a second, just to clarify? Was the motion to amend the policy, or was it just to amend the flying of the flags? Just to clarify the motion that you made?
I'm treating it as a request for this year. They're asking for it to be built into the policy in perpetuity, which I think is a broader discussion we could have. But for purposes of the fact that we're within, like, 36 hours.
I agree with that.
Thank you. So just wanted to clarify.
I agree, we shouldn't amend the policy. So here's just a couple of additional relevant facts that I found. The HRC chair attended the Veterans Advisory Board meeting on April 19th, 2022, to discuss the flying of the Pride and Juneteenth flags in 2022. The Veterans Advisory Board minutes from April 19th that day reflect in pertinent part that at one point in time, the chair, his name was Pennett, asked that June 14th be reserved for celebrations of Flag Day. The HRC, Human Rights Commission Chair Wheat, said that they will hold their Juneteenth celebration on June 15th. So to me, it appears that there was an understanding between the Human Rights Commission and the Veterans Advisory Board last year that the raising of the June 14th Pride and, that the Pride and Juneteenth flags in recognition of Flag Day could all be accomplished to the satisfaction of everyone. I also note that when Congress approved Flag Day in 1949 as a national observance, President Truman signed it into law, and he issued a proclamation. And in pertinent part, in the proclamation, he said, quote, "Whereas this beloved emblem, which flies above for all people of whatever creed or race, signalizes our respect for human rights and the protection such rights are afforded in our form of government." So it appears that we're still honoring human rights on June 14th with the flying of the American flag on that day because the proclamation indicates the words that I just read. I also note that June has 30 days, and that appears to be ample time to fly the Pride flag and Juneteenth flags and highlight the American flag and POW flags on June 14th. But the biggest thing that sells me on this is the fact that the Veterans Advisory Board and the Human Rights Commission had that meeting in the mines a year ago, and seemed, in my opinion, looking at the minutes of the meeting, to have an understanding that there was an opportunity in Wakefield to fly the Pride flag, to honor the American flag on Flag Day, and to fly the Juneteenth flag. And that's why, in looking at all these additional facts, I would support the motion.
Thank you. Other discussion?
I'll just, I'll just add that this is, this is an important thing to our veterans and to a lot of people in our community. The flag, our American flag symbolizes a lot to a lot of people. And the fact that they had unanimous vote on this, that they feel very passionately about this, and they are certainly the best positioned folks to be able to speak to the issue, I think is very compelling.
Counselor Smith Galvin?
I will have to say, I am struggling with this because the Pride flag, unlike in past years, is flying on a completely different flag pole. And I think, as you say, the American flag does represent all those things. And I don't find any, I find it hard to believe that there's any disrespect by flying a Pride flag or a Juneteenth flag fairly far away from the flag pole where the American flag is being flown. So I really am struggling with this one because I think, I understand the importance of the American flag, and we are, throughout on our policy, we have respected that. And, you know, the Pride flag is flying lower, it's flying fairly far away from the American flag. And I, I just, I really don't like this sentiment that we're showing some disrespect by flying another flag that we all have talked about here. So, you know, my father's a veteran as well, and I've had this conversation with him. And, you know, he feels very strongly that he fought so that people could see the Pride flag and the Juneteenth flag, you know? And the reason we do it at the Americala, in my mind, is because it's a place where everybody goes by in town, it's the center of town, it's where students come out of the middle school and see it. And I think, I think the flag is important there, and I think the Pride flag, the American flag and the Pride flag are important there. So that's just my personal thoughts.
Thank you, Counselor. Just before I come back to you, see Counselor McLean has his hand up.
Sure. Thank you, Chair Chines. That is difficult to say, isn't it? Whenever I almost daily go down to Lake Quanipout, I see our flag flying at Veterans Field. When I'm finished running and I walk back up about three tenths of a mile on Emerson and Cedar and Hillside, I view not on Flag Day, not on Memorial Day, but on any day, I view another 12 American flags. I think that Pride and the flag is not necessarily the province of any one citizen, it's each citizen. And I think we all have an equal interest in it. And I think that the flag is extremely well-respected by our current policy and well-respected by Wakefield residents in general. We have a pre-existing, it seems to me, commitment to have the Pride flag up through June 14th. So I don't consider this, you know, I consider this, as Counselor Dabrowski said, to take down a flag. We're taking down a flag. I just don't think that we need to do that to afford the proper respect for the American flag in our town. So I don't support this motion.
Thank you, Counselor McLean.
Thank you.
Sorry, did I, I didn't, did I cut you off?
No, I'm done. Thank you.
Apologies if I, if I did. Counselor Vincent?
The only thing I would add is, I would tend to agree with you. What's determinative to me is the meeting between the Veterans Advisory Board and the Human Rights Commission last year. And I recognize that this request is pretty late because we're talking about this on June 12th. And if it's not done this year, that's totally understandable. What I would hope is that for next year, that once again, the Human Rights Commission and the Veterans Advisory Board meets early on in the year and comes up with an understanding, as they've done in the past, as to how to handle, how to handle the month of June. Because I know there is a renewed emphasis by the Veterans Advisory Board and the Boy Scouts for having a Flag Day event, which is this Wednesday night at 7:00 at the Common. So I do agree with you. What I found, and I did, nobody told me about those meeting minutes. I actually just went and found those and highlighted that section because that was very determinative to me. Thank you.
Any other discussion?
I would just add that...
Counselor Dabrowski?
I'm sorry. It was just, it appears that the request was back, was submitted to us back on May 16th, based on our packet here. So I think that, I don't think it was the last minute request, and it did come up at the last meeting, but I was told that it wasn't in time to make the agenda, although I know the letter came in the morning after the Veterans Advisory Board had their meeting to vote on this. And again, we're talking about the sliding of transitions by a day. I support the, you know, the Pride flag certainly. I was at the ceremony. I have personal reasons to support it more than anyone else on this council. And so it has different meaning to me than it probably has to many of you. But I'm okay with what the veterans are asking for here. I think it's a reasonable, you know, one-day ask that just for like one day, there'd be the focus on just the American flag. And I don't think it's, I don't think it's disrespectful to the Pride flag. I personally don't take it as disrespectful, especially since the Pride flag, to my understanding, after a period of the Juneteenth flag being flown, the Pride flag goes back up, I think, for the remainder of June. So it, there's a good amount of time that this is up, and it's a matter of transitioning, of sliding this by a day. And I think going forward, when we do these flag approvals, I do think we should, there should be some deference to Flag Day on the 14th when we're thinking about our scheduling. But I'm not looking to make up policy tonight. I just think that the Veterans Advisory Board is owed the respect of the vote for this flag request for this year, as I'm calling it, with a much, with a broader discussion to be had in terms of going forward. No matter what, even if we change the policy, we're talking about one day of the year when they wanted to be exclusively the American flag and the POW MIA in recognition of that particular day, which is Flag Day. I don't find that to be unreasonable, but for tonight's purposes, I'm simply asking that, that we vote in favor of what they've asked us for.
Counselor McLean?
Just to Counselor Vincent's points about the meeting minutes from some time ago, I wish that the boards had talked to each other about this and that we weren't faced with this decision. And perhaps in future years, that can be worked out, and I fully expected it would be. But tonight, we have to make this decision, and I pretty much stated where I stand on it. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor McLean. Any final comments?
Can I just clarify? Because I think I might have misunderstood me a little bit. I, in no means do I think that flying the American flag is disrespectful to the Pride flag. That's not what I said. flag. That's not what I said. I don't, I also don't think that flying the Pride flag is disrespectful to the American flag.
I agree with you. No.
I think you might have, like, flipped it there, so I don't.
Oh, no. I don't think other flag is disrespectful to the other. Don't, no. I, I agree with you. I respect both flags.
Absolutely.
For different reasons, of course. Yes.
Okay. I just wanted to clarify that.
Yeah.
All right. Hearing no further discussion. I, I just want to make one comment, I think, just to highlight that, you know, this is a challenging issue, and I know we've received a recommendation from the Veterans Advisory Board. I will also say, I've heard from a number of veterans in the last couple of weeks, as well as, you know, family members of active duty service members who, who've encouraged us not to take down the, the Pride flag on the 14th. So I do just want to recognize that, you know, we all should be careful not to speak with, about, you know, the veterans community in, in a broad brush. You know, I think there's a diversity of opinion as well in the veteran community that, you know, I think we all respect and appreciate. So with that, we'll go to a roll call vote. So the motion on the table is to remove the Pride flag from the second flag pole at the Americal Civic Center on, on June 14th, 2023. Counselor McLean?
No.
Counselor Vincent?
Yes.
Counselor Smith Galvin?
No.
Counselor Butt?
No.
Counselor Dombrowski?
Aye.
And myself is no. So Sheri, that's two to four in the negative. Any other items related to flag policy? All right. Hearing none. Item 11, donations. We have a request to accept and expend a gift or gifts to the Wakefield Youth Action Team, the amount of $500 from various donors with thanks. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All right. Seeing none. Counselor McLean?
Yes.
Counselor Vincent?
Yes.
Counselor Smith Galvin?
Yes.
Counselor Butt?
Yes.
Counselor Dombrowski?
Aye.
All right. That's six zero. Sheri?
Thank you.
Item 12, approval of the minutes. Do, I'm going to try this a different way so we don't have to do another roll call vote. Is there any objection to approving the May 22nd, 2023 Town Council meeting minutes as, as presented? All right. Hearing none. The meetings, minutes, excuse me, are approved. Item 13, announcements. I'm going to take actually Chair's prerogative to kick off the announcements, really with a, a message of thanks and, and celebration and collabor, and congratulations. So as, as everyone knows, Wakefield Memorials High School's class of 2023 graduated a week ago this past Saturday. And, you know, I think, as we talked about when we talked about the youth council, I mean, we have some extraordinary students and young people and leaders in this community, and, and every class that graduates is special. But when you think about what this class went through and the resiliency that they've shown, I mean, this was the class whose freshman year was interrupted by COVID. And so, you know, more than any other group of students, their high school experience really was defined by a global pandemic. And through it all, they showed resilience, they showed flexibility, they showed perseverance. And I, I think, you know, all of us who are adults know that those are, are skills and traits that are so important to success in life and, and to happiness. And so I, I just personally am, am very proud of, of the incredible accomplishments of this class, of everything that they've done. And I know I speak for everyone here in, in the room today, but also everyone in Wakefield in expressing our congratulations. So as folks know, there is a, a senior week tradition where the seniors go back to their elementary schools and they get clapped out by the elementary school students, go back to the elementary schools that they attended. And so in that spirit, I'd like to actually ask my colleagues to stand up and give a standing ovation to our class of 2023 and say, "Congratulations for everything that they've done." And also, congratulations as well to our, our classes moving on from the Galvin, the class of 2027, and our elementary school classes moving on, the class of 2031 as well. So with that, I'll open up the floor to any announcements. Yes, Counselor Dombrowski?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First, I wanted to extend the congratulations certainly to the students, but also to our teachers and our paraprofessionals and our staff. What you're doing is, is what you've done this year and what you've been able to do over these past few years is Herculean work. So thank you for that. I also wanted to remind everyone that this Saturday, June 17th, is the opening of the farmer's market. I know that every year, it gets, it gets better than the year before. It feels like it's not even possible to do that, but we have a great lineup this year. You can go onto their website and check them out on social media as well, Saturday morning starting at 9:00. Be mindful of where you park, be mindful of crossing North Ave, and hopefully we'll have the most successful and, and the best farmer's market yet. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Smith Galvin?
Can I add right under that? There will be bike ballet set up, so you can ride your bike and leave it. You don't have to lock it up. We have, the youth council is taking the lead on this, and you'll just get a tag and you just have to bring it back and get your bike. So free and fun and no parking hassles. Best parking spot in town.
And can I just add on to that?
Please, Counselor Butt.
And mention, the farmer's market is a volunteer-run nonprofit, and they're always looking for volunteers. So go to their website and sign up for a shift to help out if you can.
Counselor McLean?
Back to, back to the high school students for a second. Chair Chines, your comments and, and those of Counselor Butt in terms of the great students we have, I just wanted to hit on a few things very quickly. I very much enjoyed the articles of all the students in the item. In particular, I say to Mr. Wyatt that I'm glad that students are still reading Vonnegut and Bradbury, and so it goes. That, and to the valedictorian, Molly, I will call you by your correct first name. It is all about the people. And thirdly, to anybody that's just the face in the crowd, what you do from here on out, whether you go to college, do a two-year, do a four-year, or go beyond like some of us have, I wish you well, and it's really all up to you. It's within your power to do anything that you want to do. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor McLean. Any other announcements? Counselor Vincent?
Thank you, Chair Chines. I just wanted to, once again, as a veteran, I wanted to, to thank the West Side Social Club and the town of Wakefield for the two Memorial Day events that were put on recently. I've celebrated Memorial Day all around the world, and I have to say in all candor, the celebrate, the events that take place in Wakefield are very meaningful to, to veterans. And I also want to, this is my second Memorial Day since I've been elected to Town Council. So I, I just wanted to thank Counselor Butt for last year and Chair Chines for this year for the way that you represent the Town Council, the comments that you give at the, the West Side Social Club and the, the Memorial Day event. And the last thing I'll, I'll note is, speaking of flags, I was sitting under a canopy at the West Side Social Club with the Veterans Advisory Board Chair and you and my wife, and the American flag was not anchored properly, that was next to the canopy, and it blew over. And I stood there holding the American flag proudly for the next hour while you gave your comments and the other folks gave their comments, and throughout the duration of the rest of the ceremony. It actually was meaningful to me that it was just that happenstance that the flag flew over, but I felt like I was part of the event. But I really do appreciate the comments that both of you have made over the last year at these events. It means a lot of how you represent the Town Council and you do a very good job of representing what Memorial Day means to, to America. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I, I'll just say, in terms of the flag, you know, when, when the flag blew over, I, I was so impressed, and it was just, you know, wonderful to see how quickly, you know, Counselor, Counselor Vincent, you and Mr. Pansieri, you know, rushed out of your seats to, to make sure that the flag wasn't left on the ground. I mean, it, it's clear how important that was to you, and I, I know you, you spent a lot of time standing there, holding on to the flag and making sure that it didn't fall again. So that, that was noticed and appreciated, I know, by a lot of people there, too. Counselor McLean?
And one other that I forgot was to thank Chief Gory and the Police Department for removing the memorial ceremony that I attended, and to doubly thank them for giving me the extra five minutes to have my wife come down with her parent contact lenses because I had a wardrobe malfunction, and one of my lenses fell out. So thanks to the chief and, and the force.
Thank you. Steve?
I had one announcement, actually.
Please.
But, you know, the Food Pantry had a wonderful breakfast on the 7th, and it is amazing the work that they do every day. But I, I really wanted to highlight the fact that they have entered into a shop local, feed local campaign, and I don't know if everybody, you know, we promoted it, but hopefully people are still watching us this evening. So anytime that you spend $50 at a Wakefield business, and it could be multiple times, between June 9th, a few days ago, and June 18th, $50, and you take a picture on your phone of the receipt or bring your receipt over to the Chamber of Commerce, the Savings Bank will donate $10 to the Food Pantry. And that $10 really, by their buying power there, will probably provide, you know, $40 worth of food for the Pantry's Kids First program. And I think they have only over 90 families that take part of this. So this is a great way, if you're running around this, this weekend, you go to Shaw's and you spend $50, you'll have like two bottles of milk and a loaf of bread, and you already hit that. You'll be all set to go. And $10 will go from, will go to the Food Pantry from the Savings Bank. What an amazing concept this is, and I hope they raise a lot of money. It really shows how our businesses take care of each other and the importance of the Food Pantry in their lives of over 500 families a week that come there. So this is a great, great way to feel good about yourself and, and get, get somebody to the Food Pantry. So you have, you know, almost another week to go on it, so just wanted to highlight that.
And just to add to that, you know, one of the things that they talked about with the Food Pantry breakfast was the fact that the, the demand for service continues to increase. And so, you know, they accept donations at all times, particularly, you know, financial donations are something that are incredibly helpful. So continue to encourage people to make sure you support the Food Pantry. It's an incredible asset in town. Our, our community social worker, Jason Stone, talked about how closely he works with them to help make sure that we're, we're meeting people's needs for, for residents who need the support. And so just encourage people to please, you know, as you, as you think about the causes, you support the Food Pantry is certainly a worthy one.
And the farmer's market was mentioned tonight. If you have SNAP benefits, farmer's market will also, I think, double those.
Correct.
Down there. So that's a great way for people to get some fresh produce as well. So amazing, amazing organization.
Steve, I didn't know about that promotion. I've been away.
I know. Where have you been?
I've been checking out other cities and public health projects all over and other cities. Is it any Wakefield business?
Any Wakefield business.
So if I, if I get gas for my car.
Correct.
At a Wakefield business.
Anyone.
And I get $50, which I normally do.
If you patronize a restaurant in town.
Okay. So it's a restaurant, it's our stores.
Restaurant, a store, a hardware store.
Grocery store.
Restaurant, grocery store.
The gas stations are included.
Gas stations, clothing, anything. Any Wakefield business, period.
That is a great promotion. We will, so we're in day, day five? No, day three.
Day three, yeah.
So we'll keep on doing that. Can I add some other updates?
Please, go ahead.
Counselor McLean reminded me, I also wanted to thank Chief Sullivan and the Fire Department for the Fire Fighters Memorial Event on Sunday. That was, again, bright skies and really moving. And also just mentioned, as discussed earlier, the Juneteenth flag raising will be Thursday, June 15th at 6:00 PM at the Civic Center. So hopefully people can join for that. That's it.
Thank you. Sheri, anything on your end?
No, I'm all set. Thank you.
I'm assuming our Nahon Street project team hasn't shown up since then.
Yeah. No, sorry. No show.
All right. Just one, one last item that I wanted to mention before we leave the announcements. So we, the Town Council, had our, our annual planning retreat last week where we had a, I think, a really productive discussion around our goals and priorities for the year. I, I've circulated a draft of that to the, the members of the council and would, would certainly ask people to get any feedback back to me. But for members of the public, we, you know, that will be, that document, that list of priorities will be something that we post on the website once everyone kind of checks my, my notes and probably my grammar and spelling as well in the documents. So look for that. That's something that, you know, I hope people find helpful and certainly always welcome to hear any questions or suggestions on those priorities. So item number 14, matters not anticipated. Anything else that we have? All right. Hearing none. Item number 15, our next meeting will be two weeks from today, Monday, June 26th at 7:00. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Is there a second? And any objection from any members of the council to adjourning?